...to your neighbors, please take it outside. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, March the 12th, 2015, 7:00 PM. Our invocation this evening is going to be by hand, we have a turn.
I think you may also. Oh, thank you, Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the blessings that you've given us. We ask you for your wisdom as we make these decisions on what is the best for the city of Florisville. We ask that you bring with us and be with the families and across people who are there. And we thank you for your infinite wisdom. We thank you for your love and your guidance. These things we ask, we refer in your service, may we. Amen.
Okay, we have established form. We have Councilman Dejado, Councilman Ortiz, Councilman Nieto, Councilman Guerrero, and Councilman Rodriguez. Would everyone please stand for the flag of allegiance and the flag of worship?
A flag of allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to hear any citizens' comments.
I just speak my good. My name's Jerry Gopfich. The Republic Service, a little council for the mayor. I would like to speak briefly concerning bulk service. We have bulk service that I prefer one is.
It's the flyers that were on your kids.
Yeah. Saturday, March 28th. We're gonna have two gravel trucks here. The kind that can pick up trash off the ground, pick it up, put it in its own container. We're gonna have two of those. We're gonna have two rear load trucks. We're gonna have two open top trucks. The second collection is on July 18th. The third is on October 3rd. One of the things that we're doing different this year is City Manager has a wants us to help out. We did it last year also with the handicapped and elderly. We're gonna go to their houses and actually do that. That's outside the contract, but it's something we want to do to participate more with the city. Do you have any questions concerning bulk of them?
This is, we're running an add in newspaper for the next two weeks so that community will know. It's gonna be posted on our website tomorrow as well. We have a list, so we want to come call in as a senior to have the curbside pick it up as Terry stated earlier. So we're hoping that we can get going, do our spring cleanup in spring. The mayor and I started it last year this time, and I can't believe it's time already again. So we're really looking inside to do that. Have you noticed the dates? In July is after the Fourth of July, and in October, it's right before our peanut festival so that we can actually get all cleaned up as we have people coming to our wonderful town. So there's flyers in the back. You have some of, if you don't have any questions, that's all I have to say.
So they can, the public truck in the list as of now?
As of now, we have flyers and we're putting them on the website. And we're running an add in newspaper as well.
We're gonna be here from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM and bring as much as you can, as much as anybody can bring, bring in. I don't believe there are any living on it. But we're gonna have plenty of people there helping out. It goes pretty fast with the gravel trucks, so we go to dump right there. We take it all up for them, and then we load it in the tucket. And we have two rear load trucks to come, and those can hold incredible 12-ton each. And then we're gonna have, like I said, hold the tops also.
So the unique thing about this program this year, and we started it last year near the end of our cycle, is that we're doing curbside, definitely for seniors. And then anybody can go to the old dump on that Saturday and just kind of bring everything on Saturday. But we need to offer a curbside, that would include branches and those kind of furniture. Any kind of thing that can get to the curb, then we can come pick it up. Our guys will be working along with the public, so we'll be all hands on deck, and hopefully we can go along and do that. But remember, curbside is gonna be reserved for seniors and handicapped residents only.
We're gonna be there from 8:00 to 12:00, so utilize the power we all want. That's a great idea to do that.
And I really wanna thank Republic for partnering so well with the city and staff. We've met four and had one meeting, and we're gonna have several with his local supervisors. They came out and were meeting, so we're really excited. And thank you so much, Republic's contact and doing as well for the city.
There's some other thing for you, some audits that are required by, we did our own audit already, but we're gonna do it in cooperation with city staff to validate. It's gonna be interesting to make sure we're doing the right thing and tell our community. We're on board there. Thank you.
Wait, I have a question. So we're not gonna pick up for regular citizens if they have something out in front of their house?
That's totally y'all's, y'all's fresh.
Well, the last time it ended up happening was that people put out a massive thing, and they ended up spending a lot of time, I think it was at address on Fourth Street, that they put up a massive amount. So anyone who residents, who are able-bodied, they can get in the truck and get into the dump. But we really wanna focus and be able to complete the town focusing on seniors and people with a handicap, is I focus for curbside.
Yeah, 'cause there's a lot of people that don't even have the trucks to load up and stuff, and that's why they put it down there.
That's not to be having that timeframe, but you're happy.
There's a matter of time, so we're gonna make sure we hit the seniors first. Because they spent almost two hours at that one location that we wanted to be in.
Can I do a point? This is under citizen comment, and we're kind of starting a discussion here.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rodriguez, did you have something?
Good evening, Mayor. City Manager, City Council. My concern here in Florisville is that we got Easter right around the corner, and the media down towards doing, we got a bunch of weeds coming out and flowers. I mean, I notice that as a city manager, but you know, we're supposed to be a team. The city manager can't be everywhere, the mayor can't be everywhere, but we all need to work together and, you know, talk to each other. And I think that in order to keep towards beautiful, we need to, you know, keep the trash and the media cleaned up because there's a lot of flowers coming out, but if you drive down the media, man, you see all those ugly weeds coming out. And it's just a concern to me because, you know what? When people drive towards, when they see grass and trash all over, it makes the city, you know, trashier. And I don't know what the city council does besides sit here and make decisions, but I think we need to get out there and talk to people. And try to solve some of these problems that the city's going through and get the people involved in the city council, or in the city. Because there's still a lot of work that needs to be done, but I don't see, you know, the city council, they're talking to people instead of that, which is not their job, but again, you know, that's what makes a city council and the city good. And I think that's the problem that we have here, you know? To get out there and talk to people. I mean, we can sit here and make decisions, but if the people are not coming up here because they feel intimidated, then they won't come out and express their concerns. That's just what I have, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Doug Jones, President of the Parks Foundation.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna present written comments to the six of you. Your agenda item is gonna shoot me down, so my first portion of what I'm gonna give you has been overcome by events. Usually you have old business, and the old business is usually approving minutes of the last meeting. And I think all of you know me that through research since I've been the president of the foundation, I'm a stickler for facts, and I'm a stickler for things being said in public that are correct. And I don't have one for you group. I didn't realize that you weren't gonna have that as an agenda item. But it deals with your last meeting, presentation, and discussion. Holiday extravagance funded by the Hotel Motel Tax. A citizen during the comment section of that agenda item asked Councilman Tejada, "Did the 2011 event make money or lose money?" And his response was that he thought that it broke even or even made money. Contrary to his response, I've attached Wilson County News articles that contradict the councilman's response. One speaks to the city asking the Texas Attorney General to intervene after the Wilson County News submitted a Freedom of Information Act asking for the documentation of the 2011 event. The second article is entitled "One Extravagant Fuss", and it detailed a $15,958 and 20 cents loss to the city. And I've included a breakdown of what the city provided too, the Wilson County News. Since you don't have agenda item tonight, I would hope that you keep what I've given you. And when you do review those minutes, if it is reflected that the answer that I think was given by Councilman Tejada said what I think that he said, that the city secretary be told to put a statement in there that he heard when he said that they either made money or broke even. And I would also like the laws, the amount, be part of the public record to show how much money was lost during that event. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, now we're gonna go on to Item 1A, the proclamation for Conny Memorial Medical Center's 10 years anniversary. I'm gonna read that. It's whereas Conny Memorial Medical Center is celebrating 10 years at its current location as of March 9th, 2015. And whereas the new facility enables Conny Memorial Medical Center to provide continuous support to the community by advancing their mission of expanding healthcare tools in county. And whereas Conny Memorial Medical Center has been able to open several additional clinic services, recruit exceptional physicians, and has achieved a tremendous amount over the past 10 years. And whereas the outlook on this facility's future impact on the county over the next 10 years is greatly optimistic. Now therefore, I, Mayor Garza, do hereby proclaim March 9th, 2015, as the 10-year rededication ceremony for Conny Memorial Medical Center in Florisville, Texas, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize this administration and all its employees for the significant impact that they have made and continue to make in healthcare as a critical part for our county. Chris, I don't know if you can take that vote.
There won't be a vote. You declared it as mayor, if the city has a whole wants to do it, we can put a CNA.
Okay. Do we have a problem?
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to Item 1B, our Employee of the Month. We're gonna start with January, who's Officer Eric Hutchinson. Mayor, if I could ask the chief to join me? Chief?
I'd like to congratulate Eric Hutchinson also the month for the month of January 2015. We'll award him with a plaque and a gift card. Better small, please.
We're so proud of Eric. Even though he's a special guest on here.
Yes.
Congratulations, Eric. Thank you.
We have his mother in the front row. And then February, our Employee of the Month is CJ Cooley, our Code Compliance Issue Year. She represents CJ Cooley as our Code Enforcement Officer, and she's been employed with the city for the last nine months. But in this short time, CJ has successfully completed basic code enforcement training, regional watershed management, and Texas City legal dumping training. And CJ's also has a certification in animal control, taser, X-26, law enforcement and corrections. And her husband's here in her state because she's in class tonight, but he's here.
Taking a test.
Thank you. She represents the family, so.
Thank you.
And for March, we have Andrea Martinez, our Front Office Manager.
Yes, and Andre can be here in spring break, she's home with her kids, trying to spend some time. But just for the record, Andre's been utility building supervisor. I have been employed with the city for the last six and a half years. And in his time, she has been successfully completed supervisory skills, handling difficult customers, payroll, and she's really has been a supporter of me and taking care of everything, and know more about the water system because of that. And we give Andre a clap in reference to her absence. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Congratulations to all the citizens. Now we're gonna go on to Item 1C, Florisville Police Department Promotions. Chief?
Good evening, Council Mayor. I know we have two new council members on board, so just in case y'all haven't heard of the new promotions and transfers within our department, Mr. Turner asked me to come by and you got an update on this information and status of our department. At this time, I'd like to ask Sergeant Dennis Small and Sergeant Derek Fowler to step up, please. And as they're doing that, I'll explain what we did. Recently, we had, of course, our late Lieutenant Chad Clark retired, and of course, we, in return, promoted Dan Small to Sergeant, and Sergeant Fowler, we promoted her, or actually, that, or transferred her to CID. And that, we needed a supervisor for CID, so I figured that was the best move for now to do. And that's why there was an extra opening in the Sergeant's position. So this is our new Sergeant, Dan Small, which we transferred from Patrol Officer to Sergeant on patrol, and Sergeant Derek Fowler, who is now our CID Sergeant. Congratulations.
Thank you. Chief, go to CID's method.
I'm sorry? Criminal investigation.
Just stay there, Chief. We're gonna go on to Item 1D, Florisville Police Department Report on Crimes.
Speaking of criminal investigations, y'all should have a packet on crime stats. What we current, what I probably did is compared 2013 to 2014 crime stats. And this is what is reported to UCR Uniform Crime Reporter that is reported to the State of Texas. As you can see, it's broken down into six categories. The first section is 2013, which is, in 2013, we had two actual calls of rape, and in 2014, we had one, difference of one for this year, last fiscal year, which is a 50% decrease. The next one would be robbery, 2013, we had zero, 2014, we had two. It went up two, so there is a significant increase at 200%. Assault, total of calls, total of cases in 2013 were 93 versus in 2014, there was 106. There was an increase of 13, so there was an increase of 14%. Burglaries, 2013, there was 41, and 2014, there was 37. A decrease of four, so that's a negative 10%. It's a decrease as far as the percentage. 2013, 2014 theft calls, we had 228 2013 versus 249 in 2014. A jump of 21, which is an increase of 9%. Motor vehicle theft, in 2013, we had 19. 2014, we had 23, an increase of four, so that gives a 21% increase. Any questions on that one?
Yeah, Chief. Is there any way that we can make the public aware of where the majority of these thefts and burglaries are made? You know, so the public can be more aware of where it's happening, what area of town?
Yes, we can. I'd have to figure out on a, maybe put out a map on our website or something and color code them, indicating where the thefts or burglaries are happening.
Majority of them are.
Right. Or actually, do a blog on the paper that we used to, and make them aware. We can give them a physical address. Right. We can probably do that. And make an notation of that.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Okay, I have one more thing real quick. It's a comparison that we also did in a traffic report. Actually, this is a report plus traffic as well. Should have also had two graphs. The first one was the fourth quarter comparison from 2013 to 2014. And we picked the three months of October, November, and December of both years. As you can see, there was a, in 2013, we had 1,476, and 2014, we had 1,684, total of 14.10% increase. Those are just reports. The second one is an annual comparison on a chart which included from 2011 to 2014. As you can see, the stops are right up on top. And the second one would be the reports. There is a slight increase in every year with the exception of 2013, 2013, there's a negative 24. But as you can see in 2014, it's a positive increase as far as the percentage is concerned, which is an increase of 23%.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Unclaimed property.
I'm sorry?
Unclaimed property?
Uh huh.
Do you all have auctions?
Yes, we do. The last auction we had was approximately two years ago, and that involved bicycles and assorted tools. That don't happen often because a lot of property that is unclaimed, of course, are found as abandoned property, it's mainly bicycles. Tools and other accessories such as tools and other bigger items like appliances and stuff aren't found like that, you know? It's mainly the bicycles that we come across abandoned on the roadway or on the highway, you know?
And is the public notified?
Yes, that particular time when we did have a public auction, we did notify public via paper, Wilson County News.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Now we're gonna go on to Item 1E, Balloon Fest Riverbend.
Mayor, council members, city manager. My name is Richard Coons. I'm the developer of the Riverbend Villages. I was here half a year ago when the council approved the development agreement with Alton Park. And you may note a little accent, which is not surprising because I'm from Switzerland, to be fair. So don't worry if you don't understand everything sometimes. I don't understand everything that a lot will say, so we're the same boat. And what I would like to present to you tonight is a balloon festival that's gonna take place in the middle of May for three days. And I am basically presenting this to you as the council who decides on tourism money to be spent for attracting people to this town. The goal for today's, of today's presentation is to make you aware of what's happening in this neighborhood. And I have to say the presentation. Thank you. So it's, we changed the name just two days ago from San Antonio Bloom Spectacular to Texas Bloom Spectacular. And the reason being, I think it's more attractive, it's a broader range. I mean, I think it's good for, you know, you guys if you can say we host the Texas Bloom Spectacular because you're from the young city, and Texas is gonna host a subject, a Texas Bloom Spectacular. So what is the idea? The idea is it's gonna be an annual event starting this year on a recurring basis, like the other four main events, or three main events that I have, you know, started for Riverbend, which is, you know, the Fourth of July, it's gonna be a Fourth of July event down at the driving range with the fireworks. It's gonna be an Oktoberfest in fall. It's gonna be Riverbend Rejoice, which we had last year for the first time at the beginning of December with a firework. And it's gonna be the Spring Event, which is this one, the Bloom Spectacular. And I, you know, have a vision of making this a, you know, main attraction for Florisville in the future to have an annual three-day balloon event. And I think it will be really a very spectacular event that will attract a lot of people from outside of Florisville. And I'll show you some statistics of other events. So I mean, just, you know, the hot air balloons, everybody has seen at least one. The most famous event is the one in Albuquerque. Albuquerque has a balloon fiesta, which every October attracts, you know, 500, 600 balloons and about 850,000 people. The program that I, you know, have planned for this three-day event is basically a two afternoon and evening events, Friday afternoon and Saturday afternoon, and two morning events, which are basically balloon flights from the Riverbend Driving Range early in the morning, Saturday morning, and Sunday morning. And the event will take place between 3:00 and 10:00 Friday and Saturday afternoon and Sunday morning from 6:00 to about 1:00 o'clock. This is the whole layout of the 460-acre golf course. And I'll show you the details of how this event is gonna happen. So on the left side, you see the parking lot, Lou's, the pro shop, and the banquet room. The red section is the driving range, and this is gonna be the part where the balloons are gonna be stationed for the evening glow, for the night glow, and for the start, which we have two starts, Saturday morning and Sunday morning from the golf course out, away from the golf course, and two fly-ins, Friday evening, Saturday evening, so where the balloons start, you know, two, three miles outside of Florisville, and, you know, wherever the wind blows, hopefully blows the balloons back into the golf course, they land somewhere on the golf course. And we'll provide parking within the golf course section. So these are sections. So these are sections that are, uh, non-built areas, either developed or undeveloped. We're gonna clear them, uh, make them, you know, parking areas with volunteers and police, um, to guide the traffic. So, you know, in general, balloon events, um, you can see your list of what they do. Um, I think the general impact is, you know, it's an event of emotions, it's very colorful, um, it's very safe, it's, um, eco-sustainable, it's very family-friendly. Kids love it, young kids love it, older kids love it, adults love it, everybody loves it. We'll have free entry, free parking, so no fees are charged. Um, it'll bring in a lot of diverse people from, um, a lot of destinations, and it will be very accessible for day travelers. And for the Florisville, uh, impact itself, um, we have local vendors who are gonna be able to sell, um, their products, you know, soft drinks, uh, food, merchandise, uh, arts crafts. We cho- just charge them a nominal fifty dollars sign-up fee, um, if, you know, nonprofit, non-for-profit or profit, uh, organizations will have to make some money. That's the, uh, event to do it. Uh, we'll do it, you know, together with other, uh, existing events to attract tourism, uh, to Florisville. Uh, I think, you know, it's such a response already now, just being on the internet and having spread the word on Facebook, but I think it's gonna be a, a great destination event for the years to come. As you know, I'm a developer, um, I have, have a long-term view. Um, I'm gonna be in, uh, Riverbend for the next ten years, uh, to make, you know, the nine-hundred homes that are supposed to happen there, happen. So the events are part of, of the whole, um, event, uh, for the next ten years. So I'm gonna, you know, have ten balloon, uh, spectaculars in front of me. This one is the first. In the U.S., you have about three-hundred events a year, um, with seven-thousand licensed pilots, uh, about three-point-two-five million spectators, which makes it eleven-thousand per event average. Um, you have a, um, a strong and affluent, um, crowd, um, children to seniors, the largest group, are between thirty and forty-nine years old. Two-thirds have kids, two-thirds have a, uh, increased income, um, um, half of them have, you know, a high education. So here, three events that I picked out to give you an idea of what the impact can be on a community. Albuquerque, the biggest one, forty-three years old, ninety vendors, eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people over a ninety-day period, uh, five-hundred-and-fifty participating, um, balloons in twenty-fourteen, and ninety million economic impact on Albuquerque. It costs a lot, ninety-five million to produce, and it creates sixteen-hundred jobs and, uh, uses three-thousand volunteers. And they have a permanent staff, so it's, it's like, it's like running business. It's not sixteen-hundred jobs, but, um, during the year, but overall. Carolina Bloom Fest, uh, in Statesville, thirty-thousand visitors, fifty balloons, three-day event, two-point-two million impact on Statesville. Two million people live within a fifty-mile radius of, uh, Statesville, and eighty-five percent are day visitors from outside. The Ohio Challenge, um, again, fifty-thousand visitors, thirty-five percent participating balloons, two million economic impact, um, the majority of the people show up Saturday. Uh, seventy-five percent of the visitors are within an hour's drive. And interesting to know how people hear about it, you know, besides the social media, TV, radio, newspaper, it's word of mouth. So looking at Florisville, the economic impact, um, a preview. The market is over two million people within a fifty-mile radius, um, so an hour drive. Um, three-hundred thousand live in the five nearest counties, including, uh, Wilson County, uh, one-point-eight-two million in Bear County. Uh, it's very difficult to judge how many people really show up this year. It can be a thousand, it can be ten thousand. My balloon chief pilot estimates that alone Saturday, he thinks five-to-eight-and-a-half thousand people show up if the weather is nice like today. Uh, the three-day event, you know, I think thirty percent are gonna be Friday, and majority gonna be Saturday, and some people are gonna be Sunday. And most of the people or majority of the people who come in, uh, one-hour drive. So what is the impact, uh, in reality? Uh, the balloon pilots and crews spend, you know, nights here. Um, I, as the event organizer, have to host them. Um, they're gonna spend, you know, it's gonna be, the crew is three-to-four people, ten-to-twelve balloons, so it's gonna be twenty-five rooms that are occupied Friday night and Saturday night. Um, they're gonna spend money, um, eat here, you know, um, it's the expense of producing the event, uh, the sponsorship investments that, you know, sponsors spend on being part of it, the vendor supplies, that the vendors are active, and then the money spent, of course, by people traveling here, you know, staying here for lunch or for dinner, maybe staying here overnight if it's an established event, um, you know, buying gas, and so direct influence on the sales tax generated in the city of Florisville. And of course, the ripple effect, you know, we have to look at it long-term. Um, it's gonna be double the people next year. We'll have some balloon competition, you know, that makes it attractive for the balloonists. Uh, the night glow is a real nice, uh, feature. Uh, you'll have, you know, balloons lined up, um, when it gets dark, eight-thirty, eight-forty-five, uh, and they fire up the balloons, um, in sequence, and so it's gonna be, you know, a real spectacular view to have these lit balloons. Um, we'll have, you know, uh, event attractions for kids with kids' land, um, bouncy houses. We have a inflated balloon on the ground where you can go into the balloon envelope, run around, it's like a huge house. Uh, we'll have, um, experimental planes that will fly, uh, fly by. Um, we'll have model hot air balloon launches. We'll have a tether balloon, um, somewhere in the region of the golf course close to the entry. You can fly, uh, tether balloons. We have two bands, live bands, one Friday evening, one Saturday evening. And we'll have arts crafts and food vendors, um, across the area. There will be a photo shooting competition, so you can shoot your pictures, send them in, and then the best ones get, you know, first prize season, they get published, uh, in the local newspaper. You do get event t-shirts, hats, label things, and the whole spiel. We'll, you know, try to raise money and try to raise money with sponsors. Um, the more money you spend, the more free flights you get. So, um, if you are a sales sponsor, you have four flights, which you can use for your customers or for your employees rather than whatever you want to do. Um, right now, it's, um, me, um, David Schmuck, who is chief pilot, Paul Sato, who is, um, active in sponsoring, and I'm, uh, responsible for the event itself and the vendors. What I'm asking, um, the Florisville Tourism, um, Board, uh, to consider approving a twenty-five-thousand, um, fund, uh, for the event this year. Most of the money will be spent, um, advertising, um, Florisville, um, and Riverbend and the event in the greater San Antonio area. So we'll, you know, line up with, um, team up with one of the big TV stations, Ksat or, you know, the Citibank Room. Um, everything is very short-term. It's a visual thing, so TV stations can really, um, bring over the message. They will, you know, do the production in ten days for the event, so not too early. Uh, we'll do radio, um, some radio, uh, have newspaper coverage, you know, maybe with the San Antonio Express News, who is reaching a lot of people. Um, they'll do a TV radio production, uh, shoot, uh, down here in Florisville, and have some, uh, special, you know, presentation of balloons just to attract the public. So this is, you know, if, uh, the funds are, are, um, granted, um, they'll be used for basically promoting, um, the event, uh, even the bigger San Antonio area. That's it.
Mr. Coons, I would assume that you would want the funds before the event, or did you want, like, a reimbursement, or? Whichever works.
Whichever works, thanks.
And you were asking for twenty-five thousand dollars? I would say, Mr. Coons, that, uh, I take a lot of pride, and I think I've been promoting Florisville for, for a long time. I mean, it takes money to invest in our community. You said this is the first time you're doing this event? It's, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars. Earlier, somebody mentioned that, uh, we had a holiday extravaganza, that we lost fifteen thousand dollars, although I dispute that. When your event is over, uh, we don't know if it's, it's gonna be successful, we don't know if it's, it's not gonna be. But what do you see as a return on that twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's, it is the first-time event, so it's an initial investment. I'm basically carrying the bag for the deficit. So as you know, I, I try to cover, um, some of the expenses with sponsorships, um, some of the expenses we, you know, apply for funding for you, um, but I'm realistically, you know, I mean, I won't get enough sponsors, I won't get enough money to fund completely. I don't wanna make money on the event, but, uh, I'm thinking, I'm just holding the bag, you know, and sp- and paying the bills that are left over. I think, you know, the city of Colorado Springs, two years ago, had a major fire. They lost a lot of tourism because of the major fire, and everything was destroyed. And they sat together and, and brainstormed and tried to figure out what event would bring tourism back to Colorado Springs, and they came up with a solution to do an event with balloons. So they did a small scale, which is what I proposed this year. Tend to tell the balloons, it's for balloonists, it's a small event. For us, it's a big event, but for the balloons, it's a small event. So they did that with the idea, city of, uh, Colorado Springs themselves, with the idea of if, if it's successful, they would do a much bigger event on an annual basis the following year, which is this year now. If it was successful, then they're gonna do it. So what is the effect for, if you look forward, you know? You need a vision, I mean, it, this is not, you're not gonna be paid back twenty-five thousand this year because your sales tax is gonna be increased by twenty-five thousand through this event. Don't expect that. But it's gonna be, you know, motion of Florisville. Um, it is the Texas Bloom Spectacular, Riverbend, Florisville. A lot of people are gonna ask, why is Florisville, why is Texas balloon event? It's Florisville. It, they have to come here, they have to look it up on the map, they have to drive here, they have to stay here, they have to spend their money here. So I guarantee you, if this, if the weather is only half as nice as today, which, you know, you have to realize, the balloon event is the only event where one thing you cannot, um, you know, control, is the weather. If it rains for three days and it winds for three days, bad luck. I mean, you're sad, but they can fly. And so let's hope for this. So if it's only half-successful, if it's only half as nice as today, we will have five-to-ten thousand people that have, you know, most of them are from an hour, they're from San Antonio. They, uh, don't realize that, you know, there's a nice town in Florisville that they have never visited, you know, great infrastructure, great people. Um, they're gonna spend some time in town, they're gonna spend some money in town this year, and if it's successful this year, they're gonna be, you know, coming through next year and the years after. And I think that's why you have to have a vision, long-term vision of what it's gonna be down the road. Um, so we wanna control the success by making it doable, you know, in a controlled manner, size-wise, investment-wise. I don't wanna lose a ton of money here, you know, for just one event. I want this event to be successful, self-sustainable, um, and, and bring really, uh, you know, tourism heads to heads. I mean, people are gonna stay overnight if they know it's gonna be the Saturday afternoon, they're not gonna go home. They're gonna stay here until ten, they stay overnight in hotels. So they're gonna create the tax dollars that I'm asking you for in the hotel plans. They're gonna spend their, you know, money sending, buying stuff from town. You're gonna take, you know, the, uh, sales tax, which is gonna be in your contribution. So I think the ripple effect, which I mentioned before, is what you have to look at. Don't look at it as a singular, one-time event. Look at it down the road, what it's gonna bring, you know, how popular, um, Florisville is gonna be down the road, hosting the Texas Bloom Spectacular.
You said three things there that really caught my attention, together with other existing events, it'll attract tourism to Florisville. And then you went on to say, it holds a promise to become a popular annual holiday weekend destination event. And it has the potential to become an integral part of Florisville community. I don't really think, did you copy my speech or something, Senator?
It never is speech or hearing. But you can use some of my.
And it's important, you know, for the council to realize and, and members of the audience, that you're not gonna come back and give us a check for twenty-five thousand dollars. You have to look at it in the long term of making Florisville a destination city. And this is what we're talking about. There's a gentleman came a couple of weeks ago with the, the cycle branch, and I think there's a presentation here tonight. You know, bringing people to Florisville, since we don't have a lot of smokestacks, in the tourism industry could be a big factor for Florisville.
What percentage is, uh, that twenty percent, twenty-five thousand dollars into your budget?
Probably, yeah. Twenty-five, thirty percent. So the rest has to be covered by me or sponsors, any sponsors. What, what does the sponsorship go, 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 go to, toward? The sponsorship, that for ten thousand, fifty, two hundred, what is that? It's gonna, you know, pay for the event. So, you know, so what are my expenses besides the marketing? I have to invite the balloons and have to pay them to come, and to stay in the hotels, and to feed them. And so I'm, I'm just paying bills that I incur just to bring the guys here, you know. So I mean, those guys are the cost of me, probably the money you're, you're funding, or my spending. It's just to get the pilots. And this is just for ten or twelve teams, so imagine it's, you know, and it's, uh, twelve teams, that's an average of three to four people, it's four people, you know, let's say, um, two, two in, in, in one room, so we have twenty rooms, two nights, it's forty rooms. Forty rooms at, uh, a hundred bucks, and a room is four thousand bucks, just for the hotel. And then I have to feed them for three days. Same for, you know, uh, volunteers. No volunteers volunteering really, I mean, they expect return on their volunteer, uh, work. So what is the return? You know, they get their t-shirts, their hats, their hats, all the things. They get to be, you know, in auction for free flights. So I have to buy flights for letting some of the volunteers, once win, you know, have a flight. So for the, for the sponsorship game, you know, to make it fair to the sponsors, I have to, if, if they can fly because the weather is bad, they get a rain check. So they can go within twelve months, they can, I bring in the balloons, and they're gonna have their flights. So the sponsor who spends three grand, five grand and gets six flights, he's gonna fly with his customers or with his, um, employees. So I can guarantee him that he's gonna have, uh, a bank respect. Can you answer a question? Yeah, you're good, thank you. You know, I can tell you, Lakeway, Austin, uh, they had a, um, event last fall, it's called Great Bubbling Glow. So it's kind of a pre-Halloween thing, and, um, very attractive for the kids because the kids are all very creative, so they go. So there were five balloons in City Park of Lakeway. Balloons didn't fly. They came in, inflated them, five balloons side-by-side. There was two food vendors, there was music playing, there was a carousel. And all the balloons, they was the night glow. So when it got dark, they, for half an hour, they fired up the balloons. Six thousand people, six thousand people. Traffic was a nightmare, but everybody enjoyed it. You know, they came out with a picnic and, uh, their stuff and sat down on blankets and enjoyed. Kids ran around, you know, get, uh, trick-or-treat, the balloonists gave out treats, and the kids were standing in a, in a, how many people, uh, line to just get the balloons. So imagine, just, just on the ground, nothing else, and we offer, you know, ten times more. So imagine how, how trafficked this is gonna be for people. I mean, go out on our Facebook page. Within ten days, we have over a thousand lives. We have nothing, just, just spread the word, you know, everybody wants to come, everyone is entire. Just go in, look at the balloons, see the balloons, I mean, it's, it's amazing. You'll be amazed how many people show up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we're going on to item 1F, White Fire Sign Demonstration. Mr. Jason Brunns?
Hi, I'm Jason Brunns. I'm with a company called White Fire Signs. We manufacture LED signs. We've been doing this since 1932. LED signs weren't around then, but we invented a lot of the technology that led to the LED signs now. LED signs are a good marketing, advertising tool. It's not just a sign, it's not an ID sign for your business. It's a marketing device for you to drive and grow your business. So, I wanted to bring my unit out to show you guys and see if you have any questions. Have a little bit of literature about us and our company and a little bit of stuff about our product.
And what do you?
Oh, and I'm from Florisville. I went to Florisville High School, graduated in '87. My parents still live here.
We're all going to go outside. Okay. Stretch our legs.